Mr. Price.
Mr. President, out of the abundance of caution, the city attorney has asked me to recuse myself from item 11 due to the fact that I am a landlord, item 11.
All right, item 11 for Councilmember Price. All right, what's next? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Okay, so we'd like to invite to join us at the table Ms. Theresa Sanchez-Gordon, nomination for Police Commission. And so, thank you so much for joining us. I had an opportunity to visit briefly with Ms. Sanchez-Gordon previously in my office to talk a little bit about, you know, the demands, obviously, of this appointment. I know, as Mr. T. Fink used to tell the nominees, and I know our president has joined us here from the Police Commission, to do the job, you need at least 40 hours a week. To do it well, you need about 80. And so, we want to thank you for accepting this nomination and for the mayor advancing you in this process. Do you want to first begin by providing my colleagues a bit of an introduction about your history and background and your interest in serving in this particular role?
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. It's an honor to have met you.
You might pull the mic closer. There you go.
Thank you. I want to thank you, first of all, for your support and for giving me this opportunity. I want to also thank the mayor, Karen Bass, for her confidence in me and this appointment. I want to thank each and every one of you in the council and for your time and your consideration. Go Dodgers. This is so amazing. All right, so I'm not going to take up too much of your time, but I do want you, for those that I wasn't able to meet with personally, I want to give you a little background of myself. And I like to say that I'm a girl from East LA. But going back a little bit more, I'm an immigrant child. I came to this country with my mother and my two younger siblings. We crossed the border when I was three years old, and we made Los Angeles our city and our community. I spent my formative years in East LA. I attended the schools there. I'm a Catholic schoolgirl. I went to Our Lady of Soledad. I went to Sacred Heart of Jesus, and I went to Immaculate Heart College. My dad was a butcher. He was a member, a loyal member of local 770. My mother, she was a mother, a housewife, an activist, and a volunteer in her community. She had 11 children. I am the eldest of those children. She really is my inspiration and my role model, and I think she has guided me here to this day. I've lived in the black community. I lived by Crenshaw High School on 8th Avenue. I now live in Silver Lake. While in law school, I worked as a substitute teacher, and then I worked in nonprofit legal services. My primary focus was immigration defense, trying to participate in activities that really focused on the immigrant community during the massive factory raids here in Los Angeles. It was during that time that I was arrested for civil disobedience with Father Greg Boyle and 10 other people as we chained ourselves to the fence, to the gate of INS, ICE. That was my first encounter with law enforcement. I was then hired by the L.A. County Federation of Labor and directed their Immigrant Rights and Defense Project. Our goal was to legalize and organize immigrant workers during the period of ERCA, the Immigration Reform and Control Act. At that time, I also participated in a civil disobedience and was arrested again, this time with Senator Maria Elena Durazo and, at that time, Executive Director Bill Robertson of the Federation at one of the local hotels here in support of workers' rights. So, now, I sit here before you, and I'm very honored to be considered for the LAPD Commission. My life experience in the city of LA, my upbringing, my biracial blended family, my values, my judicial career have all contributed to this moment. I believe in the rule of law, in equal justice and fairness, and I look forward to serving the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. And yes, very excited for your appointment, Yvette. Thank you so much for your decades of dedication, and I look forward to seeing how we can keep working together to get to the solutions, right, and implement the solutions. But you are here doing this work, and it takes a lot of love to keep coming back because, like we talked about, going into those shelters, I usually come out crying because just the number of animals, the conditions, and the staff. So, I'm excited to have you there. And it was great to have you there with my colleague, Councilmember Lee, and Neighborhood Committee in Richmond. And Council President, I would like to add, I have an amendment for item number 34, and I believe the city attorney has it. Can we please be read into the record?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13, 13 eyes.
All right, 13 eyes.
Hello, Speaker. If you'd remind us of which items or general public comment you'd like to speak on.
Oh, here, I'll put this so you can see it, right? Hello, Strepan Faubel. My name is Sister Bayasa. I'd like to speak on all available items and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for items 1 through 4, 11, and 12 through 36. Please begin with the items, and then you'll have a minute for general public comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Oh, Lord, I would like to offer up my 2 minutes and 56 seconds to you, Lord. I would like to pray, Lord, for my 2 minutes and 51 seconds, Lord. I would like to quote, Lord, from the King James Bible, the most standardized Bible, the law, Lord. Good and bad fruit, Lord.
Speaker, which item are you on?
Yes, I am quoting, I am serving up my speech, Lord, my First Amendment-protected speech.
On what item are you using your First Amendment-protected speech?
Yes, in peaceful protest, I quote from the Bible, Lord, for these 2 minutes and 25 seconds.
Okay, I think we're going to send you, we're going to send you to general public comment, please.
Good and bad fruit. Luke 43. "For a good tree bringeth not forth corrupt fruit; neither doth a corrupt tree bring forth good fruit; for every tree is known by his own fruit. For of thorns men do not gather figs, nor of a bramble-bush gather they grapes. A good man, out of the good treasure of his heart, bringeth forth that which is good; and an evil man, out of evil treasure of his heart, bringeth forth that which is evil. For the abundance of his heart, his mouth speaketh the word of the Lord. Thanks be to God."
Thank you very much.
"Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit."
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker? Hello, Speaker. Which items and/or general public comment did you sign up for?
1, 2, 3, general.
Okay, so you have three minutes for 1, 2, and 3, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
Number 1. (Singing) That night I drank too much, I was flirting with you, telling lies, only to think of what's on my mind, I was crazy, I was acting crazy. My eyes were blind, I couldn't see what you were doing, I forgot what you were doing, I didn't know what you were doing, I was holding your hand, I was holding you in my arms, I didn't know that you were angry, so I thought you would understand my heartbreak. Item number 2. (Singing) If that day you didn't know how much I drank, you wouldn't know how beautiful you are, I wouldn't believe it, I loved you, I loved you so much, but I believed in your love, I believed in your scent, I was so crazy, I was so desperate, I was so desperate, even if I was crazy, I could not stop, I still believe it, it's God, it's me, it's me, if I hadn't smelled the scent of you in my hands, I would never have been dreaming, I would never have been dreaming, I was thinking of you, I was thinking of your scent, I was struggling in between, I was struggling, number 3. (Singing) If it weren't for God, it's me, it's me, I couldn't have been lost, 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 I couldn't have
and proximity to all of our support systems, including my son's school, which accommodates his special needs. We now struggle with hours-long commutes and rent that is 30% higher. It's too late to help my family, but I am urging you to say yes on Agenda 11 with an urgency amendment so no other family has to go through what we are continuing to struggle with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. I am speaking on Agenda Number 11. My name is Erica Hernandez, and I am urging you to pass an urgency clause to protect my family from rent evictions. I was raised in Echo Park. My family has lived here in the same apartment since the 1980s, and they still call it home today, my parents, my uncle, my sister, and my niece. In November of 2022, everything changed when a new landlord took over. He came in with aggressive file offers, illegal eviction notices, and a whole set of new rules. The impact of my family has been overwhelming. There's frustration, sadness, and confusion, emotions that take a toll on their health. On top of this stress, my mother has had to battle a diagnosis of non-genetic breast cancer just months into fighting these evictions. Imagine having to endure surgery and radiation therapy while fighting to keep your home. If my family is evicted, they have nowhere to go. There are no affordable options in Echo Park left. Please act now.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Mata. I'm asking you to please pass an urgency ordinance, item 11.
Please go ahead.
My name is Matthew Mata, and I'm a sophomore at downtown Magnet High School, just seven minutes from where I live now in Echo Park. But my family and I are facing eviction because our landlord says they want to remodel the kitchen and bathroom. I've lived in this home my whole life, and it's not just an apartment to me, it's where I grew up. The Mohawk Apartment Complex is a community spot where all the kids I grew up with come and hang out with me. We do things like play guitar and skateboard. If we get evicted, we'll have to move very far away, and I'll have to leave my high school behind. That scares me, and I do not want to start over at a new school or I won't know anyone. I shouldn't have to leave the place I love just because of remodel. Please, let my family stay in our home. We built our life here, and this is where we belong. We identified the problem and let's find a solution.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chris Tyler, and like many others here today, I'd like to speak on item 11. I am a tenant in CD 13, and I am a proud survivor of multiple bold and sometimes quite innovative forms of landlord harassment. As I stand before you, I wonder how many more times the tenants on Mohawk Street need to be served unlawful detainers before we can plainly and openly name this legally sanctioned harassment for what it actually is? If these bathroom and kitchen remodels are genuinely so urgent, we should use something like the Tenant Habitability Plan to prevent further displacement, no matter the hardship that this additional paperwork may inflict on landlords. Most importantly, let's place an emergency moratorium on rent evictions right now. The longer this ordinance wades through council, the more time we give landlords, big and small, to serve rushed eviction notices to tenants across the city alleging that they need four months to install a dishwasher. This has to stop. Yes on 11, urgency clause now, then let's close the loophole for good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On number one, I'm going to say no because Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Martinez has not fixed the solution, the problem with these planters that are non-ADA compliant. There's 250 of them. And until we know that he can handle that, no offense, but that the city can handle that, we don't need more CUPs and bar licenses and stuff because they're not going to be monitored and watched. And the same thing for number two, because in Ms. Rahm's area, we have La Pu Bell, another absolute nightmare, including the log in front of it. And until, like, they can get the ones that we already have in line, you know, like, we shouldn't be adding more. Let's just, you know, get what we have already under control. For number 11, I need to point out, you know, the, you know, as precious as the friendship is with Ms. Hernandez and Padilla, it's, you know, great to see them giggle and share a snack and, you know, and just have a great time gabbing. It might not be really appropriate when people are about to be homeless, okay? They're up here crying, begging for their lives, for their homes. It's just not the time, you know? But of course, I do support, you know, besties. But also on L. Ron Hubbard Way, there's people being, I believe it may be under the same prop, that they're being kicked out of their rent-controlled buildings because they are sick and tired of these endless street closures, and they are now being evicted because they dare to speak up against Scientology. Scientology, they're, you know, I know, I get fair-gamed. I mean, I get treated poorly because I stand up against their abuse. But these are people who are actually losing their homes because Scientology is their landlord. And, you know, and just because they want their street open. And again, Mr. Martinez, please get that street opened so these people... But they're already, they're already being evicted, so I think it's too late, but they spoke up against it. I was going to say something nice on 32 because Mr. McCosker always listens and stuff, but since he's not here to listen... Oh, he is here to listen, never mind. Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. He's like the best one. He's the only one that listens. He's stand-up. You know, like, he needs to teach the rest of them how to behave. He's not there, you know, giggling and having, you know, lunch. He's just, he's a stand-up guy. When he makes a mistake, he apologizes, unlike Ms. Padilla, but, you know, he stand-up. So whatever he puts in, I'm going to try to do my best to support. When he's running again, I don't live in this district, but I want to help him out because he gained my respect. You know, and as far as 29, I guess, I also want to make sure whenever we're dealing with the police commission or anything, that they are willing to separate themselves, LAPD, from the Church of Scientology, which has a huge hold on you guys. Okay, public comment.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my chat, you know, because we like to stream, we love to learn about this stuff. They introduced me to a really cool channel on YouTube called Smoke and Scan. And what I love about it, because I checked it out, it's really cool. They're just fun. They're having a great time, but they're watching all of this. Like, you don't see a lot of places that want to show what's going on in our city government. So he catches all your shenanigans, but then I guess he catches all of our, the side shenanigans as well. But I do appreciate that Smoke and Scan is there. You know, like, they're watching your TV, but they're, you know, they're able to see it. So I don't know. I'm going to give a shout-out to Smoke and Scan and then say, did you, how do they? I want to know how they feel about this little bestie situation developing. That being said, can you guys just do better at listening to the public? People come here because they have really serious issues, and they want to be heard, and respect is a part of that. If you can't respect them, why be here? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to share Victor's story, who cannot be here today, and this is directed to Councilmember Lee. My name is Victor Alava, and I live in CD 12. My family was one of several families that was rent-evicted from a 42-unit building on Lassen Street. And I'm urging you to close the substantial remodel loophole with an urgency ordinance so no other tenant has to endure what I went through. In 2020, a corporate landlord purchased my home, and after the COVID eviction moratorium ended, I was served a 60-day eviction notice and forced to move out so the owner could remodel the kitchen, bedrooms, and bathroom. I now pay $1,000 more in rent each month. I'm 56 years old, and to afford my rent, I now have to work multiple jobs. My mental health has suffered, and today, all I do is work. The reason I'm sharing my story is because I can't afford to take time off from my job. If I take any time off, I'll be living on the street. This loophole allows landlords to force out long-term tenants under the guise of unnecessary rent evictions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Laura Matter. I'm an attorney at Inner City Law Center, and I represent the tenants at the Mohawk Street property. You've heard from some of them this morning. I'm here to urge you to vote yes on number 11 and pass an urgency ordinance to eliminate substantial remodel as a basis for eviction under the Just Cause Ordinance. The Just Cause Ordinance was meant to prevent arbitrary evictions and also prevent rent gouging. This provision essentially allows arbitrary evictions and rent gouging. New owners are using this pretextually to flip properties and to remove long-term tenants. We also need an urgency ordinance because the word is out among the landlord bar that this loophole is available, and these evictions are happening now, and they will continue to happen until the loophole is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm LA Eyes. I'm an organizer in LA. I'm here to stand in support of closing the rent evictions loophole. I have seen the impact it has had for residents in Los Angeles. It hit close to home two years ago when my lifelong family friends told me they found themselves facing evictions and were in need of help. I was forced to leave the same community my friends at Mohawk are in 2013. The impact it was to uproot and leave parts of my identity from a neighborhood I loved and was a part of has been devastating. At Mohawk, Lourdes has been a childcaretaker for many years, has served generations of families in Echo Park Silver Lake communities. Her and her husband are now considered senior citizens and are retired, but are tirelessly and continuously having evictions placed and dismissed three times in a row in a year and a half. The uncertainty of their lives, while their health is declining, should be an eye-opener to all of us, that these loopholes are made for greed and economical benefit, not ethical and humane. These loopholes, for all evictions, need to be closed. For our elderly, to our thousands of LAUSD children facing homelessness, displacement, and gentrification need to stop harming our communities and livelihoods. Now, my general public comment would be on alcohol licenses. I don't know what item that was, but there is an over-concentration in Los Angeles. RBP has helped amplify that. Gentrification displacement comes with these alcohol approvals. The reason it does is because they have an increase of economical benefit and financial gain. They are given the highest limits of commercial units, and they pay an increased amount on commercial units, which trickles down into our communities, and it starts hurting our people in the inner city, in the inner parts of the communities. Anything that happens in our main streets that causes gentrification ends up going into our little streets. So RBP and alcohol licenses, Unicef knows this because she has sat at town hall on this, have affected us greatly. So I would love for you guys to look into the whole spectrum of stopping evictions and not just the loopholes on rent evictions, but all around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, 12. Why haven't we come up with a way to get people to stop stealing the copper? How many times have I told you guys you need to call Jay Santos? He can help you set up a Citizens Auxiliary Patrol. Maybe you guys are encouraging the copper theft. You figure with less lights in LA, there'll be, you know, less chance of people shedding lights on your supporters like Diddy, Leo, and your other supporters that prey on kids. 29. Why no binary members? Also, why haven't any of you talked about Michelle Obama's hate speech this weekend about women having ovaries and needing pap smears? That's hate speech. We all know that not all women have ovaries. And with Monica dressing like a Hitler Youth recruiter this weekend, I'm not surprised, motherfuckers. General public comment.
Okay.
If you guys, let's see, let's see, shout-out to Smoke and Scan. And, you know, last week, when I saw you guys all wearing your Dodgers uniforms, I felt a lot like Adam Sandler in The Wedding Singer when he told his girlfriend, you know, to take off his Van Halen shirt so the band doesn't break up. So if you guys don't jinx us, your karma is shitty enough. You've done enough to screw our city over. Don't steal a championship from us. And again, shout-out to Damon. Love you. And Jason, keep up your patronage on Figurula.
All items and general comments.
You have three minutes for the items, Mr. Spindler, followed by a minute for general.
Well, I'm sorry, sir. I'm not Mr. Spindler. I'm his little animal. Mr. Spindler doesn't live here anymore. Now, let's get to number 12, human. Number 12, fuck number 12 and the asshole. Number 13, fuck number 13. Number 14, I support it. It's a very good motion. Number 15, fuck number 15 and the mother that gave birth to the author. Number 16, fuck number 16. Number 17, fuck number 17. What are you doing? I'm ordering you a pizza. Sorry, go ahead. Asshole, go ahead.
Keep going, Mr. Spindler.
Number 18, fuck number 18. Number 19, I support it. Good one. Number 20, fuck number 20. Number 21, and number 22, fuck both number 21 and 22. Number 23, fuck number 23. Number 24, fuck number 24. Number 25, fuck number 25. Number 26, fuck number 26. Number 26, fuck number 26. Number 26, fuck number 26 and the asshole. Number 26, fuck number 26 with a pitchfork. Number 26, fuck number 26. Excuse me a minute. Go on to 27. Number 27, my nose. Fuck number 27. Number 28, fuck number 28. Number 29, fuck number 29. Number 30, fuck number 30. Number 31, fuck number 31. Number 32, fuck number 32. Number 33, fuck number 33. Number 34, fuck number 34. Item 35, fuck item 35. Item 36, fuck item 36. Item 94, fuck item 94.
There is no item 94, Mr. Spindler. Go on to general.
Item 81, fuck item 81. Yes, and today, we've done it. We got rid of one black, unqualified commissioner and put a hateful Latina commissioner on the LAPD commission. Let's give us a hand. Good job. Yes, isn't it nice? You're going to have a commissioner that got arrested by LAPD. Holy shit. I see FBI informant in the future. And of course, fuck the Dodgers. A bunch of lowlifes have to buy everybody's players. Let's go Yankees. We can beat City Hall and their evil team. Fuck the city council, but remember to vote for Kevin DeLeone. Kevin DeLeone will improve your life better than anybody else because he thinks you should also go fuck the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Next caller.
Hi, this is Ruth. Can you hear me?
We sure can. What would you like to speak on?
1130 in general, please.
Okay, you have a minute for 11, then a minute for 30, and then a minute for general. Please begin.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you. For number 11, yeah, please close the loophole for the evictions. You hear these people in front of you, they've had to do this multiple times. Like, the amount of energy that they have to put into just staying in this community is ridiculous. Like, just please help them. For accepting philanthropy, for consulting about homelessness from the Conrad Hilton Foundation and whatnot. We, like, here in LA, there's a lot of issues happening with the LA Alliance and stuff, with this Alvarez and Marsall audit. I think it's interesting that these philanthropists are offering to give money to, like, do another one, basically, another audit or something. But like, all of these audits tend to be, sometimes they are exploited, like, to make recommendations that, like, you know, they wanted to make anyway. And I'm just really skeptical about the political motivations of these donors as well as of the Alliance auditors. They've lobbied against Measure A, which seems in bad faith, seeing that they have the city under a settlement that requires them to maintain a certain number of beds, and Measure A would allow the city and county to maintain those beds. So why are they lobbying against it? For my general public comment, there's a genocide happening right now in Palestine, and the United States has deployed troops... and the United States has deployed troops, like, at least 100 soldiers. Those soldiers are going to come home eventually, hopefully, and be homeless on the streets and on Skid Row and at the VA. You know, we should not be sending soldiers. We should not be sending money or weapons. We need that money here in Los Angeles to take care of our problems, and yet, we've used it to fund 70% of the IDF military. Like, over the last year, we paid $25 billion. That should have stayed here in Los Angeles. That's our tax money. And these people are dying. There's only, I think, 50 to 80% of their buildings have been turned into gravel using weapons that were manufactured here in Los Angeles, at Raytheon and Northrop Grumman. Please stop the genocide. Please stop sending money to Israel. Thank you.
All right, item number 29. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
The council may now consider item 11, which was called special by Councilmember Price for recusal.
All right, we got a couple recusals on this item. Let Mr. Price make his way. And it seems like we've got a number of amendments on these items, so let's begin to dispense with those.
Yes, Mr. President. There is motion 11B on the floor, which is Jaroslavski Blumenfeld-Rahm.
All right, do we need to vote on these, or are these accepted as friendly? We have two amendments. If they're accepted as friendly. All right, the author says it's a friendly amendment. The chair will accept it as friendly. So we can vote on item 11 as amended?
That is correct, sir.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And for the record, this was also amended by motion 11A, Lee Blumenfeld.